I'll call to order this regular meeting of the Nelson County School Board, January 19th, 2016 at 5:00 PM. We'll start out with the Pledge of Allegiance. The Board Mission Statement. The Nelson County Board of Education, representatives of our citizens and entrusted with their children, pledges to support the mission of the Nelson County School District by setting visionary direction to effective policy, oversight, and efficient resource management. Vision Statement is quality education now, learning for life. Do we have any changes to the agenda?
No, sir, we do not.
Okay, first item then on the agenda, item three, the organization of the Board, three A, election of Chairperson. I'll make the motion that we elect Diane Berry for Chairperson.
Second.
Second by Mr. Payton, all in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion passes. Ms. Berry?
Congratulations.
My turn. Let's see. The B, three B would be election of Vice Chairperson, and I would like to nominate, or elect, I guess nominate, Larry Payton. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Sorry. Okay. Ms. Berry, a second, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Guess what, Larry? It's you and me.
You're number two.
Okay, next on our agenda, four, is student and stakeholder engagement, and this will be our student performance.
We have some folks from Bloomfield Middle School here, so I'd like to ask Ms. Tracy Burke, Principal, to make some introductions, if that's okay, and I can turn that over to teacher and students from there.
Good evening. I'm Tracy Burke, Principal of Bloomfield Middle School, and always, I guess, a difficult thing to do, to try to narrow things down when you feel like you've got wonderful, many wonderful situations and kids in your school, but under the direction of Ms. Posegay, we have a very talented group of students who run various different technology and leadership programs within our school. They continue to place in the state with the STLP group, and probably one of the most, I guess, proudest things that happens at the school each day is this group, under the direction of Cody Arnold here, pretty much runs a seamless live newscast every morning. They have anchors, and they have news anchors, and they have jokes of the day, and they start our morning off, every morning, through the TVs with smiles and news. So, really proud of this group, and this is our STLP group.
Good afternoon. We are members of Bloomfield Middle School Student Technology Leadership Program. We'd like to tell you about what STLP is and how we use this program in our school. Through the Kentucky Department of Education, STLP helps students of all ages using creative technology. It is free to join, and each school can choose how to structure the program. At WBMS, we participate in STLP through our projects, our services, and our news program. Almost every member participates in all activities as much as they can. We all meet daily before school. We often get together during or after school as services and projects need work is needed. At least twice a year, we travel to get together with other STLP members at regional and state competitions. School STLP programs usually create technology projects that provide service to communities. These are opportunities for us to show or learn more about projects at school, district, regional, state, even international level. The six goals of STLP provide the basis of our projects.
And STLP provides a variety of leadership opportunities for our main service that we provide to our school is in the morning news show that we broadcast on TVs to all the classrooms. We have an audience of about 450, and every STLP member is a part of our news crew. We have grown from about 10 members when we started four years ago to about 205 today. And every person has a specific job. They must be capable of handling two or three other jobs as backups. That's where I come in. I am responsible for orientation and training for new members. We have other members that are leaders in equipment management, job roster, news collection, graphic artists, and production manager, and more.
And each person has special qualities that they give to our STLP group. Sometimes they find talents that we didn't know we had until working with STLP. We use those talents alongside the technology that we learn to use every day during the news. For example, I have not known STLP very long, and I'm one of the broadcasters. I am also learning to run the switchboard, how to balance the sound. Many students are to sixth graders and stay with STLP all the way through eighth grade. We are constantly growing and planning improvements. The sixth and seventh graders are already planning and practicing for some of the new jobs they'll take on as students, and the more experienced eighth graders are gone.
Many of us have started STLP in sixth grade, and we continue through our middle school years. We have enjoyed showcasing our projects at district level and giving moral support to each other.
Every year at Bloomfield Middle, we work on one team project where all members participate. Since our STLP group started three years ago, our projects have included broadcast news, Raspberry Pi, and this year we have focused on solar energy. We want to make other students more aware of what solar energy is and how it works. Planning for projects starts the previous year, and we will continue to work on solar energy for 2016 to 2017 regional and state showcases. I'm a sixth grader, and I haven't been to a state competition yet, but I can tell you about our regional competition at Uofel. Our project was a lot of hard work, but it was a lot of fun, too. We met after school and sometime during school, building models and researching solar energy, and creating our showcase display. We got to meet the other STLP groups in our district, and we got to see projects by other elementary and middle schools from all over this area. Although our team did not make it to state level, we know that we will next year, given more time for this project. We will still go to the state competition in May at Rupp Arena to cheer on two teammates who made it to state level in individual categories. Keegan Somos will be a reporter, and Cody Arnold will be a video producer.
WBMS and our year-long team projects are only part of what we do in STLP. We tend to work on our team projects in spurts as we have the time, especially when it's close to competition time. But on a day-to-day basis, we get things done around the school. We help teachers with television problems, we hook up projectors, and we install new equipment. We run sound systems and video cameras for events, and we also troubleshoot all kinds of computer problems. While we are fixing a problem, we try to teach the user how to fix their system for the next time it breaks. This is part of our service. Of course, we also troubleshoot our own broadcasting equipment, and we are always trying to find better, more efficient ways to run our news show.
We each start our day by saying good morning and working very hard with our STLP family. We also work hard to respect and support each other. When someone has problems at school or at home, there is always someone to comfort you. Each of us are accepted for who they are. We try to take this respect with us when we go to competitions or when we are working with other kids and adults beyond our own group.
And thank you for listening to our presentation, and we hope we have given you a better understanding of what we do and why we love it.
Toby, the young lady, what's your name?
Me?
Standing next to Toby.
Maggie.
Maggie. So I'd say Savannah Guthrie has someone to really compete against them for that opportunity to speak. We were just up here talking to each other, Superintendent Hornet. Your voice, I mean, all of you, all of you do a great job, but you've got one of those voices that we can see someday you're going to be on TV doing the Today Show, or Good Morning America, or something like that. How many of you, four hands, do not like to talk in front of others, like give speeches in class? You couldn't tell it by the way they talked tonight, could you? I mean, tremendous the leadership skills that each of you are showing tonight. Sixth graders, seventh graders, eighth graders, I mean, great work, really great work.
Very nice, guests. Thanks for coming to tell us about it. Very nice.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And I think we've got someone to read some good news for us while you're reading. Outstanding.
Bloomfield Middle School created a new shared mission for their school. The work was done by the entire staff, then went to the school improvement committee to create the actual wording. Once that process was completed, the SBDM voted on a new mission. The new shared mission at Bloomfield Middle School is building relationships, mentoring leaders, shaping leaders. Foxville New Haven Middle School had a record number of students by accepted to Middle School Honors Bay. Grant Amshoff, Dylan Parrish, Emily Sowes, Brianna Cranimer, Riley Downing, Evan Lausten, Wyatt Brown, Abby Skinner, Dela Cecil, Riley Peak, Conlon Easlin, Autumn Howard, and Trevor Tatum all traveled to EKU to represent Nelson County. Autumn Howard, Riley Downing, Abby Skinner, and Trevor Tatum all received first chair and top honors in their selections. Coxus Creek Elementary School has had two teachers pass their first national board exams. On December 18th, six Horizon students received diplomas. About eight students finished one semester early, and one student needed an additional semester to complete the graduation requirements. These students are still planning to participate in their homeschools' graduation in the spring. Horizon Academy student Brianna Maladon Leo has been completing an internship at FET for the last two years. This week, we learned that she will be hired for a full-time position when she graduates in May. She will start making out $13 an hour. The Nelson County Early Learning Center has been encouraged this winter by the overwhelming support from our families. Our night with Santa Claus and Christmas breakfast were huge hits. It is always exciting to see the students outside of school hours with families enjoying each other. Nelson County High School seniors, who are now CCR, took the cardinal celebration walk down the halls of Nelson County High School as the student body cheer of the month. 57% of the class of 2016 is now college and career-ready as we aim for 100%. Old Kentucky Home Middle School is off to a great start for the new semester focusing on the Wildcat Way, recumbent instructional practices, and expectations for our students to be ready, responsible, and respectful. Thomas Nelson High School student Giselle Lee, Sierra Sander, Molly Skinner, James Watt, Marcus Boeing, John Aubrey, Eli Hall, Jared Vermon, and Daniel Ballard were selected to represent Thomas Nelson High School at the Xavier Honors Day recently, and are very proud of this time for their first-time accomplishment. The state recently released the Nelson County Area Technology Center's Career and Tech Scores from last year. We went from 59.4% the year before to 79%. In one year, the ATC moved from 42nd out of 52 ATCs in Kentucky to 19th out of 52. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next is Dr. Warwick, Expect the Best recognition.
Each month, we recognize four different people, a certified staff member, a classified staff member, a student, and a parent with awards, really saying thank you for going above and beyond the call of duty regardless of the position. And so, I'm going to read from the nominations for each of our award winners for tonight, and then, once I've read through all of those, I'll ask them to come forward, and we've got a presentation that we'd like to make, and also make some pictures as well. So, if you'll bear with me a minute, I will start by telling you about our Certified Expect the Best winner from Foster Heights Elementary School, where Ms. Gagny has been working diligently with her students to improve their writing abilities this year. In fact, I got to go see recently when she invited her students' families in to listen to our class read their own writing, showcasing their writing pieces for others to read and offer feedback. Providing students leadership opportunities and challenging them to exceed their own expectations is an example of how Ms. Gagny expects the best from her students, so we certainly are grateful for that. For classified staff, also from Foster Heights, Ms. Misty Roller is a jack-of-all-trades for Foster Heights. In addition to greeting students, staff, and visitors with a smile, she is also a lead communicator in the transportation system. She braves the elements to ensure that our students have the correct method of transportation, and she developed a system to be as efficient and effective as possible as well. Misty is in charge of attendance and social communications. She does all of these things with a caring attitude and selfless approach to every situation. She continually gives visitors an excellent first impression of Foster Heights and is a model of what it means to expect the best. Then, our parent is from the Early Learning Center, the Nelson County Early Learning Center, and is actually a grandparent. Ms. Patricia Gilliland is a grandmother who has never turned down an invitation to help the Early Learning Center. She has spent time in a classroom, shopped with students in the Santa Shop, wrapped gifts, sold above and beyond for our fundraiser, and cut out classroom items to save teachers' time. She is uplifting to be around, always offering a smile and an encouraging word. We're privileged to have her here supporting the school. And then finally, our student for Expect the Best is Ms. Haley Abel from Nelson County High School. She is a successful, responsible young lady who goes above and beyond in her participation in school community. She helps her peers and is an exceptional leader. She works very hard with the best attitude. So, we want to say thank you to these folks. If you guys will come forward, then we will meet you down front for a presentation.
Mary, Mary, I have a shirt for you.
Congratulations. We've got a little more going on at the beginning of the meeting this month than we typically do, but it's all for a good reason, and so I appreciate your patience with us as we continue to recognize some really deserving folks. This month, the month of January, is actually National School Board Recognition Month, and believe it or not, this is not the kind of job that people always say thank you every time they talk with you, and so we want to take a moment to say thank you to our school board members. I will say that we believe the Nelson County Schools are a benefit to this community through the daily efforts to ensure that all students achieve at high levels and possess the knowledge and skills to be responsible citizens and enjoy productive and satisfying lives. The members of the Nelson County Board of Education are the heart and soul of the public education governance system and represent the essence of local leadership. Our board members, Ms. Berry, Mr. Payton, Ms. Berry, Mr. Norman, and Mr. Jackie, play a crucial role in promoting student achievement by supporting the vision, establishing policies and budgets, and setting clear standards of accountability for all involved. At the same time, board members are directly accountable to the voters, forming a vital link between community members and their schools. We, as staff, parents, and members of the broader community of Nelson County, would like to say a very heartfelt thank you for your service. You've got each of you at your desk, a small token gift from one of our schools, and we have a few more things collected for you that we'll give you at the end of the meeting. Nothing of any great financial value, but very sentimental, and I think, across the board, very heartfelt thanks for the hours of time that you put in, not just here in these fascinating and exciting meetings that you have with us in the public eye, but for all of the phone calls and the conversations that you have with the public and with people here at the office and in our schools. We do want to say thank you very much, and I would ask that our guests, if you would, say thank you with me as well.
Thank you. Okay, the next item is Nelson County Schools Community Support Incorporated Employee Lease Agreement. And for you is Dr. Warwick, would you like?
This is me again for just a few minutes. Many people in the community will be familiar with what we used to call the Endowment Foundation or the Foundation in Nelson County schools that raised money through a variety of different means to support extracurricular activities and things going on in the school classrooms. That organization, in 2013, decided to take a break, if you will, to kind of have an opportunity to restructure, and over the last couple of years, we've been working to put together a board that would help us do a reset on that organization with the purpose ultimately of providing financial support to do some innovative work in the classrooms with funds that don't necessarily always come directly from the school board, but would be coming in from the community. Secondarily, really, to create networks of support, just building the people networks to provide additional support to the schools. So, we've got, I think, a really solid group of people who've agreed to be on the board for this community group supporting the schools, and I want to take just a minute to introduce those members, and then I'm going to ask one of them to come and talk to you a little more specifically with an additional introduction. So, if you guys wouldn't mind standing when I call your name to be recognized, we have Toby Lewis in the back, who is a Nelson County graduate and a former Nelson County teacher who works with us for a variety of reasons in the school district, and we appreciate his support. And then we have Mr. Dave French, whose son Cody is, I think, getting ready this year to graduate from Thomas Nelson High School, has had a phenomenal golf career, among other great successes. I'm just probably more jealous about the golf. We have Deanna Newton, who has three kids that a lot of people would probably wish they could spend more time with because they're really great kids and going to see a lot of success, but Deanna and her family have been great supporters of the Nelson County Schools, so thank you, Deanna. We have Rick Zilke, who most of us know over the years as having worked in our schools taking pictures and having people come take pictures, but he has agreed to work with us on this board, and we're glad to have him. And I'm finally going to stop and introduce Mr. Adam Wheatley, who is a former Nelson County School Board member who is working with us, and he wants to make a couple of additional comments and introduce you.
First of all, I can't believe your memory is short enough to walk you back up here. I just spent eight years on the other side of the dice, so it's a pleasure to be back. It's actually my first visit since I left. And congratulations to all our winners for Expect the Best. That's tremendous service you do to our school, and I'm sure we all appreciate it. And it's good to be back and see the kids and have the opportunity to witness that. I'm here to introduce Ms. Dorothy White, and Dorothy served as the Executive Director of the Barstown Nelson County Chamber of Commerce for past 12 years, and she retired from that position just last month in December. In 2008, Dorothy served as the President of the Kentucky Chamber of Commerce Executives. In 2010, the Chamber was named a Top Ten Chamber with Honors of Excellence by Kentucky Business First Publication. Her leadership has been key in keeping the Chamber and its membership front and center in the Barstown Nelson County community. I first started working with Dorothy when she came to the Chamber in 2003 through the Young Leaders and some of the other Chamber events, and it was always a pleasure to work with her, and I found her contributions to be quite outstanding. The Board of the Nelson County School Support, Inc. is excited to return our focus to bring innovative, exceptional experiences to our Nelson County school classroom, and we know that Dorothy's leadership and people skills will have a positive impact on the experience and the future of our students. So, again, I'd like to welcome Dorothy White into this position. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I am looking forward to working with the Nelson County Schools and folks that I have not met yet, I'm sure I will in the future, and just wanted to tell you that I appreciate the opportunity.
So, next, I will make my way up to the podium, but we'll give you a break for the first go-around. So, what we have before the school board is kind of a reaffirmation of an agreement that really began years ago with the original foundation for, really, simplicity of financial management. We have, for years, acted as this sort of fiscal agent, entered into an agreement that we refer to as just an employee lease. So, that in this case, what we're asking the board to agree to do is to, in the initial timeframe, six months, 12 months, maybe longer if necessary, while Dorothy acclimates to the position and begins to build that network that we talked about, that the school board would pay for her salary, and you would authorize me to enter into a negotiation with the community support board to get the details on that salary worked out, and then we will support that position until it's time for the board to take that responsibility on. I apologize for stumbling over my words, but for that board to take the responsibility on. The board's in a good spot right now with their finances, but we want to give Dorothy an opportunity and this new board an opportunity to get things going before they take on the additional responsibility of funding that salary. Even at that point, the board would invoice the community support group, and they would reimburse the board. Again, it still makes it a much easier process for the school district to cover that and then get reimbursement rather than have them have to manage and keep their own financial systems in place. So, that's what I'm asking for. You have a recommendation before you to approve authorization for me to negotiate an employee lease agreement for the Executive Director position of the Nelson County School Support Association.
I mean, I for one, I think this is a great opportunity. I mean, we get someone that's established in the community that has a proven track record, obviously, with all the great work that Ms. White has done for the Chamber of Commerce and the local businesses. It's a great opportunity for two nonprofit public entities to partner up, and it's all for the benefit of students within the Nelson County Schools. With that, I'll make the motion that we approve this authorization for Superintendent Hornet to negotiate this employee lease agreement with the Nelson County Schools Community Support Incorporated.
Mr. Jackie has made the motion, second?
I'll second.
Call in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Good luck to you. Because I know if you, it will be exceptional. You'll be exceptional.
We are really, really excited. We've We've all been sitting on pins and needles to get to this point, and I'm just really excited. So I want to say thanks to Dorothy for being here, for the members of the board, for their presence tonight. We really appreciate your support of our work.
Okay. Next item, five, is Efficient Resource Management, and that includes in our packet that we've already looked at over the last few days, it involves a draft budget, consulting, informational personnel actions, treasurer's report, bills and claims, unitary report, leave of absence, minutes from previous meeting, fundraiser requests, and overnight or out-of-state trips. Do we hear a motion?
Motion.
Mr. Page made the motion, second?
I'll second.
Okay, Mr. Norman, second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, motion carried. Our next is item six, is Efficient Resource Management, and Mr. Hockins Smith, you're up with the draft budget for 2016-2017.
Draft budget we talked about a couple of weeks ago in some detail. Just to remind the board members and the folks that are not familiar with the process, this is the first version of the '16-'17 budget that we'll ask the board to adopt. In this case, it's, we know very little. The governor will be making his budget presentation to the legislature a week from tomorrow, and I'll be watching that that evening, and we'll be looking for the day or days that follow analysis of that governor's, of the governor's presentation that we'll receive from KSBA and KASA and other folks as to some of the details that are in the document that he presents to the legislature. Now, the budget that we currently have before you tonight, again, is based on really very little, other than 17 and a half years of experience on my part, Mr. Orr's experience, and other members of the staff. I have included, for the purposes of discussion, for the purposes of the draft budget, local tax increases. We expect to see new local tax revenue, basing that conservatively $450,000 in new local revenue. We are looking at flat CEE funding. Again, that may not be the case, but we have seen that a number of times over the last few years, and again, that number depends also on enrollment. We have some arrangements that have been put in place in the last year or so that may or may not affect that, but we'll be watching those numbers very closely. But currently, the budget continues showing flat CEE funding of $15,350,000. A few other highlights, vocational school funding is decreasing, and that's, I'm assuming flat funding from this year to next year, vocational school funding is less this year than it has been. We're assuming a 1.45% step increase, no mandated salary increase, but that could be a part of the governor's budget, and it may be, may be offset by an increase in the CEE base. Again, we know, we don't know any of these things at this point. Certainly, we'll have to make adjustments as soon as we begin to see some of those details. And when we come back to you in May, we will have a lot better picture at that point because legislature's required, and someday in April, I don't remember the exact day, but someday in April, they're required to approve a budget so it can be in place by July 1st of 2016 for fiscal '17. As far as expenses, again, I mentioned the 1.45% step increase. We've got potentially on the horizon, we talked about at the work session, I believe, the need to upgrade Wi-Fi infrastructure throughout the district, and we just did it at Nelson County High School, and the district invested about $40,000 of our money and about $100,000 worth of money that we received E-Rate reimbursement on. So that project was roughly $140,000. The rest of the district, to bring it up to code or speed as far as Wi-Fi connectivity as it compares to the high school, the estimate currently is $260,000. We're not required to do all that in one year, depending on what the budget looks like when we get the governor's proposal and other things start to come into place, we may recommend that we go ahead, because obviously, the quicker we get that place, the better service we're going to have for all of our students, all of the programs throughout the school district. Utility expenses, another big line item in the budget, we're recommending, we're expecting that to be flat from one year to the next. That's absorbing rate increases and some new square footage. Again, that's an example. We're going to try to continue to squeeze as much out of that as we possibly can. We've talked recently about our ranking in the state. We're going to try to improve upon that ranking and try to spend no more in utilities in fiscal '17 than we spent in fiscal '16. Those are just a few highlights. We do have six buses, I think we talked about that at the work session, we have six buses currently in the budget, and I'll be glad to try to answer any questions anyone may have.
Just to remind me, and I feel poorly about having to ask because I should know this, the, going back on the technology one, you said it was about a quarter million dollars, but that's our cost if we did everything, and it's about $800,000 to $900,000 worth of equipment, meaning that we would get about 80% of the real cost paid for through the E-Rate program.
It is, is it 80%, Dave? Yes, 80% propane, 20 cents on the dollar.
20 cents on the dollar, okay. And that may be at the high end, it may be that we only do half of it, depending upon what we find out out of the governor's budget proposal and any ensuing budget cuts if they happen or...
We won't be required to do it all. That's, I've spent some time with Jesse Morgan and our IT department about the benefits of that versus, you know, just the ability to be able to do it. So once we know more as far as the budget is concerned, we'll come back and have a recommendation for you at some point. There's a process now of getting those numbers together as we speak. In the next few weeks, I think we'll have some better numbers on the cost. We may not know if we have enough money, but we'll know what it's going to cost by the time we know how much money we have.
Okay, do I hear a motion for approval, request for the draft budget for the fiscal year of 2017?
I'll make a motion.
Ms. Breeding made a motion, second?
Second.
Mr. Norman, second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carried. Okay, next, Mr. Hockins Smith, staffing formula.
We're proposing two changes to the '16-'17 staffing formula. Those changes include making school secretaries eight hours a day through the allocation. They're currently allocated at seven and a half hours a day. That's a minor expense to the district, but I think it will help the schools out. The schools still have the flexibility to staff, to hire secretaries for seven and a half hours a day and save the money that that other half hour would have cost them, do something else with it. It just is a little relief to the schools. If you've been to any of these schools, I know, Ms. Rower back here works in one of our schools, if you've been to any of these schools, it's like Grand Central Station. They certainly can use an extra half hour for each of those clerical folks that they have in those offices. So that's one change we're requesting, and the other change is involving assistant principal allocations, and it will not result in any new positions or cutting of positions, just changes the threshold in which assistant principals go to combined schools. We're requesting that number go to 330 students, like we talked about last month, or earlier this month, excuse me. That would continue staffing at the current levels, and that's a recommendation for the staffing formula.
Okay, do I hear a motion?
Motion.
Okay. Mr. Page made the motion to approve the request for the cash formula, second?
Second.
Mr. Jackie has seconded that motion. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carried. Mr. Hockins Smith, you again, 2006 and '07 bond refinancing resolution.
I've got a couple of heavy hitters back here. I'm going to try to do this, but these guys are here if we need them. We had a good day, I feel like, Thursday. We opened bids on the ELC project. We had a number of bidders, I don't remember exactly how many, well, I guess if you look at the tabulation there, I can't tell you how many bids we had. You know, if you remember the total number of bidders, Michael, without me counting them up here, we had multiple bids on all bid packages, I think with the exception of concrete carpentry, and the good news is, if we take the low bid on each of these 14 bid packages, it comes in within range of our budget projection, which means we can recommend we proceed with the project, and it does not adversely affect future projects, if that makes sense. I'm going to let Stephen and/or Michael address a late change based on bid package number seven, I think drywall, yes, drywall. We're recommending you not take the low bid because of some qualifications that were addressed in their bid submitted. Michael, do you want to address that?
When we opened, received and opened bids, this particular bidder had a letter with their bid which had a long list of qualifications on it. The documents don't allow for that procedure. Certainly, the board is, has the option to waive that, and if you so choose. If they had, they probably had 15 qualifications, and 13 of them had no material effect on the quotation, but two of them specifically would impact, had potential of impacting their quotation and would make their bid not equivalent to the rest of the people that quoted the job. We can't qualify, it didn't, so that's one, it didn't, it was not materially the same as other bids. Two is, the Department of Education, of course, does not allow you to qualify the contract in any way. Contacted the bidder and discussed that with them in detail, and they indicated to us that they were not going to be willing to accept a contract without their list of qualifications added, which means there was, there would be a potential of additional expense associated with their contract. Therefore, we recommend that you choose a second bidder on bid package number seven, and that's the way the tally is added up.
So whenever you talk about qualifications, you're saying that that low bidder on bid package number seven said, here is our bid, dollar cost, but we want it to be done this way, not the way the bid package was written.
That's a very good representation of it, yes, sir.
And if they did it the way they are proposing to it, Kentucky Department of Education says, they will improve it.
Correct.
And that if they were to change, meaning that low bidder were to change, that these requirements that are in the bid package and the Kentucky Department of Education says must be done, that's going to change the bottom dollar, which means it's going to go up.
It could, but we gave them the, we gave them the opportunity to withdraw their qualifications, and they chose not to.
The other ones, as I look through it, of course, we had a great relationship with Studio Crater and with BCD. I see some names that are familiar, that we've had on other projects within the district. The recommended choices, all of them being the low bidder with the exception of that one bid package number seven, are all of those bidders, ones that you two as our partners are comfortable with?
Yes, they are, and with the exception of two, they've all worked for the school district before.
Oh, meaning, meaning two of the low bidders.
Yeah, Dixon Electric has not, but their project manager worked for the school district on, at, when they were with a different company previously, so that's a nice feature. And the only one that hasn't had any contact is Structural Steel Services, but all of these contractors are well qualified to do your jobs.
I see that Atlas Metal Products, which I think are, they're the one that did the indoor softball baseball facility over at Thomas Nelson, I think.
No, no.
Is that it? Okay.
Actually, Atlas does floors and frames for almost all your jobs.
Okay, I must be confused.
Any other questions?
You know, I'll make a motion to accept the recommended ones, meaning all of them being the low bidder for each package except for bid package number seven, and going with the second lowest bidder as recommended by BCD and Studio Crater.
Okay.
I'll second it.
Okay, Mr. Jack made the motion, and Mr. Page, second, all in favor to accept the construction bids?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, motion carried.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, Mr. Hockins Smith, now we've got 2006 and '07 bond financing resolution, I'm sorry. I got that out, or excuse me, I'm just getting hang of this, okay?
You're doing great.
Give me a meeting or two, and we'll be fine.
You're doing fast.
Yes, we all stay on and carry on, and if people are watching HGTV, you have figured out what was that construction stuff, okay?
This is a good time. You know, we've, we've been talking about expansion of the ELCs, so we have room to move our childcare back in that facility and have room for growth. We've been talking about since '08, I guess, page three at Thomas Nelson High School, and next month, we'll be coming back to you, we hope, with a recommendation to approve bids to complete that project. And those two projects will just about exhaust your current bond potential, assuming Thomas Nelson comes in close to budget as this job did. What we're asking you to do next is approve a resolution to refinance or to authorize the school district finance corporation, which is also you folks, but to authorize that group to approve a resolution to ultimately refinance two bond issues from back in 2006 and 2007. Now, those issues back in '06 and '07, the '06 issues, reissue, was for Horizon's Academy and this building. The '07 issue was a renovation of the athletic facilities at Nelson County High School and some major renovation of the ATC. Bond rates have dropped to the point where, I talked to Joe Nance earlier today, he would have liked to have been here tonight, but he was already scheduled to be in another board meeting, another part of the state, couldn't make it, and we've done this enough times, he felt like, and I felt like, we could, we could get through this without his, his direct help. But after talking to Joe today, he feels like if you all approve this resolution tonight, rates will be in a position for them to sell bonds within the next couple of weeks. And I believe we sent you a schedule of projected savings, and over the life, the remaining life of those two bond issues, the projected net cash savings to the district's just under And I, you have that document, Carl? You might, she may not have that, and I apologize for that, but at the beginning, fiscal '16 savings of $32,549, it goes up and down depending, yes, but, and what that does for you, when you reduce your annual bond payment, it frees up bond potential. So $30,000 a year will bond roughly $400,000. So you're putting that, at the time you're essentially spending all your bond potential on these two big projects that we've wanted to do and needed to do for some time, you're putting back into your account by refinancing these issues from a few years ago, $400,000 roughly, and that'll be seen quickly, that'll be added to by the legislature, and as time goes by, through student growth and assessment growth, and we'll build back bond potential fairly quickly over the years, and this is a good start. We do not extend the life of the bonds. It's not like refinancing a mortgage where you never have anything but a 30-year mortgage, where they're paid off the same date they would have been paid off originally. We're just saving $30,000 to $40,000 a year in interest by refinancing them. KDE will not allow us to refinance these unless the district sees a minimum of 5% net savings, and currently rates allow for that. So again, Joe said earlier today to me on the phone, feels like we'll be able to sell bonds in a couple of weeks, and if we do that, of course, we'll report that back to you as soon as we do with the results. Typically, I get a conservative estimate with my, from my friends up at Ross Sinclair, so I expect when we, if things happen the way we hope they will, when I report back to you the results, they'll be better than these projected savings. So hopefully, we'll have more than $40,000 bond potential as a result of this action if you take it tonight. Be glad to answer any questions.
So do nothing, we keep paying the same amount, do something, we save money.
Let's save money. Yeah.
Make the motion.
Okay, Mr. Jack made the motion to approve.
Second.
Second by Mr. Norman, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? All opposed? Okay, motion carried. Next, Mr. Hopkins Smith, your last duty, technology offers of assistance.
We have an offer on the table tonight from School Facilities Construction Commission for technology, technology offer of assistance in the amount of $33,285. We're asking that you approve that, we're gonna match that dollar for dollar immediately and receive those funds hopefully in the next 30 days or so. I believe that's an offer of around $7 per student ADA wise. Mr. Jackson, you know that $7 is...
Second offer's eight, so go to nine, eight, seven.
Okay, so we'll be receiving another offer slightly less than this. And so we're looking at about $200,000 between state offers and our match, dollar for dollar match by, by the end of the year for technology funding. Of course, we supplement that with a lot of general fund dollars as well, so we're recommending approval at that time.
Okay, the motion recommended, option approved.
Motion.
Okay, Mr. Norman made the motion, I'll second. Ms. Breeding, second, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you. Next, Mr. Beck with school makeup dates for 2015-16 calendar.
Well, I'm sure you're going to see me again next month, it seems like from the forecast. At this present time, we only have to deal with, sorry, I brought it up here.
I'd just like to say, forecasting not always be... Just saying.
You may be accurate. Currently, we have missed January 12th as one of the snow days and we're looking at all of our options as far as the makeup day, but at this time, after weighing the pros and cons of the different days, we would like to bring before the board the possibility of a makeup day for February 15th for approval, as we only have one to make up at this point.
Okay, so a makeup day would be February 15th, correct?
Yes, ma'am.
To this point?
Yes, ma'am.
I'll make the motion.
Okay, Mr. Kate made the motion, second?
I'll second.
Okay, Ms. Breeding, second, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, so we approved our makeup day presently for February 15th.
We'll get that communicated first thing tomorrow morning, a number of different ways, but of course, it is already designated on the calendar as a potential makeup day, so hopefully that won't be too much of a shock for anybody.
We've already, we're Brian, out, to make some greetings, I'm just telling you.
It's May on a Tuesday.
I agree.
Thank you, Tim.
Thank you. Our next item is professional growth and back to the system and Dr. Orr.
This is a conversation we've been having for a little bit of time, so we're gonna ask for a formal approval of this program tonight. We've talked about it several times, but now we've got some of our staff from New Haven who are here tonight. And I did meet with the teachers last week and talked with them for about an hour and a half. And I think it's fair to say that the big concern and certainly an understandable concern deals with the non-renewals of non-tenured staff. And one of the things that we've talked about is that when we talk about non-tenured staff, these are individuals who typically are in the first few years of their teaching career, they're on a year-to-year contract, and so at any time, at any year, that contract could be non-renewed until you start the fifth year. Usually, we make those decisions in the late spring, around the late March, early April timeframe. What, what I've talked about with you guys as well as with the staff at New Haven was a plan to accelerate the hiring process for New Haven so that any qualified candidates for the leadership lab program, those positions would be filled early on so that we would have as quick as possible an understanding of how many non-tenured staff would need to be returned or would need to be considered for returning. That's a decision that's ultimately made every spring by the principal. I think certainly this conversation has brought that issue more to the forefront of those staff members in the school and I certainly understand that. So, our plan would be to take a look at the number of applications that we've received for the leadership program to determine which of those would be recommended. And I say recommended as probably not the best phrase, but forward those to the council and the principal for consideration in the hiring process that's already in place in accordance with site-based policy there. Again, because we've not implemented this before, we don't know if that would be three teachers who would apply for those positions or if it would be a larger number than that, so it's difficult to predict exactly how that will shake out. So, we set this up to take care of filling those positions that can be filled with the leadership lab as quickly as possible so that as quickly as possible we're able to remove any concerns or anxieties for the teachers who are on that non-tenured status. We want to make sure that we take care of that just as quickly and kindly as possible. Again, it's difficult to predict the interest, but we want to be sure that we're prepared with our processes to be able to accommodate whether we have a small number of qualified applicants or whether we have a large number of qualified applicants. So, I wanted to be sure to address those things. Something else that we have made adjustment to from prior conversations, we had originally been talking about a two-year time commitment for people who would be successful in applying to the program and obtaining a teaching position. And after listening to you all and talking about it among ourselves and with others, we feel like a three-year timeframe is a better term to expect people to commit. That does assist with the goal that we have for stabilizing the staffing and stabilizing the student achievement at the schools where this would be used. And so we think that's a, a good way to go. Finally, I'll add, we've talked about looking for candidates who are interested in going into teacher leadership or into administrative leadership roles. So that could be a principal, but it doesn't have to be. It could be someone interested in instructional coaching position, but doesn't have to be. It could simply be somebody who would want to remain in the classroom but have some additional responsibility, as we've talked about, whether it's a committee leadership or a PLC facilitating position, something along those lines. So, we want to open things up as much as possible to give as many opportunities for a variety of different teachers and teachers with different career interests to have the opportunity to pursue that. At the same time, we want to stay focused on positions that we historically have difficulty in Philly. To be perfectly honest, when we open a position for a principal, and you'll hear this concern expressed across the state, if we have an open principal position, you may get six applicants or you may get 15 applicants, but the days of getting 20 or 30 applicants for a principal's position have really passed. So, we want to be sure that we offer encouragement within the district to obtain those certifications and that's a capacity within the district that we really want to build with this program so that if and when we would have an additional or another principal vacancy, we can look within our own system at the folks that we've been working with, getting to know, letting them become familiar with the expectations for administration in Nelson County schools and make a good decision in that case. But that would apply for the principal position, for instructional coaching position and other similar opportunities. Those would be the two main ones because that's where we have the shortage, obviously, when we go to fill those leadership roles. So, we've kind of talked about the overview, I'm glad to take any additional questions that you board members may have, but then we would ask that you approve the program going forward because, as I said, we want to run the program just as soon as we can get it going and get those positions settled and built so that we can move forward.
I, I want to say this. I, I think it's a great idea and whether, this is for kids, this is for these kids, they're not, it's not anything that's being made up that, that sure, it'll benefit the individual, but we've got to do something for those kids down there. And this, to me, is a very logical advantage for both sides, for the kids and for the, the teachers. I mean, that's just the way I feel. And when people have called me and told and asked me about it, that's the bottom line, is whether you feel, I don't know how to put this right, whether you feel like you're, it's not the proper thing maybe to do or somebody's gonna get hurt in it or somebody's gonna get maybe not hired back or whatever. I'm more concerned, not that I'm not concerned about that, but I'm concerned about those kiddos down there. And David, you know it. I mean, that's, we've got to do, we've got to work to, to help those kids. And that's, to me, that's the bottom line.
Well, I think that, you know, I mean, the goal is to put our top talent down there and I think that this will make that happen.
I don't know if it's per se top talent, I just know people that are interested in, it could be anybody, any teacher in the county, in anywhere, anywhere in the state or whatever. If they want to apply, then they should, they should feel like they should do something. But we have got to realize that those kids come first, all of our kids come first, really. But those, those kiddos down there just need the help, a little bit more help than some others.
You know, while, while this is not exactly the same, I, I compare this to a program that benefited me as an educator. Whenever I started teaching, one of the schools that I taught at, second, second school I taught at, was identified as needing math teachers and it was also identified as a school that had a very high percentage of low socioeconomic status students, low SES students. And by teaching there, it forgave part of my college student loans. So it was an incentive for me, for someone that was needing to fill a very specific type of slot as a middle school math teacher. So while it's a little bit of a different program, it still is an incentive in a way for teachers in this case possibly that want to pursue, I think the phrase you used is an advanced leadership degree or an advanced leadership program, whether that might be someone that has that desire to be a building level leader, a principal, or an instructional person, maybe someone like Ms. Williams or Ms. Brown that wants to be that instructional leader for an entire district. So it can not only help that teacher for that long-term goal they have, but I think like you're saying too, it can actually help build capacity within, and while we're, we're looking at doing this initially as this pilot within New Haven, it can help us build capacity within our school district. If, if this goes as we hope it will go, I mean, this could actually set the groundwork for other places within our district that maybe has identified a particular need, that we can actually look to expand that down the road in future years. And I think, and I made a few notes here myself, I want to make sure that I am thinking correctly on this because we want to make sure, I believe, as a board, that we are not infringing upon that site-based decision-making council's right to hire the right teacher that fits their need. So all we're doing as a board is saying, if this person that is applying to, in this case, starting out at New Haven with this program, applying to New Haven, if they have met certain dispositions as wanting to pursue that leadership advanced degree and potentially we could help them with that, then we'll mark that as being, here's someone for this beginning to look at that maybe is the best person for the position, may not, it's gonna be their choice. But if they do get selected, the Board of Education is gonna support that teacher with this goal. It may be that someone gets selected to fill that position that is not interested in this initiative. And that's okay as well, as long as that SBDM identifies that they're gonna be the best person to meet the needs of their students and to meet the goals of that staff. The only thing that we're doing here is we're just saying, if that person also wants to pursue this, if they meet the disposition, we're willing to support that from a financial standpoint. And so I think that way then, we're able to still defer that final decision to the SBDM council. Is that...
You said that very well, thank you.
One, one question I do have, and I apologize, I didn't catch this as I was looking over this leading up to the meeting. I'm trying to remember back at our work session as we were first being introduced to this concept, that there was conversations about a particular dollar limit per year towards the advanced degree. I don't see that in here, but I don't know if, if I'm thinking correctly, that I remember correctly.
Really, we haven't specified that yet. What we want to do is leave it open for the teacher to make choices if they haven't already enrolled somewhere, to be able to, to make some choices. But one of the things that we talked about was making sure that we didn't have a situation where somebody drug a program out over a longer period of time. But I think generally speaking, expectation is that most folks when they enroll in a program like this, they're gonna want to get it done, taken care of in a timely fashion. And I think we've left the, the program open enough that if we've got concerns about how someone's progressing, then we'll be able to address that appropriately at that time. But I think generally speaking, we think people will move through programs at the rate, about as quickly as they can because as much as we love teaching, we don't always enjoy being students so much. And so it's nice to be able to get through those programs.
If I remember correctly at the work session, it was mentioned, I know 25 years ago, we had 10 years to get our masters. I think, is it five years now?
I think that's right, it's a shorter timeframe and that is something...
I see Ms. Brown checking her.
She had to say the five.
She's high up on those numbers. But that is, that does bring up the, the fact that especially folks that are just starting out are required to go through these processes in order to renew their certification and remain in the classroom anyway. So, really, that's another way that this program really has several ways and I think has opportunity to, as I've said before, solve more than one issue that we have at one time, not just for the schools, not just for us as a board, but for the individual teachers as well.
Again, as a first, second, third year teacher, we've got student loans, we possibly have a, a family that has started, we've got all these other bills. If there was someone that stepped up and said, I'll help you get something you have to get within five years anyway, I, I think we might have some very energetic and, and some great teacher leaders that might take us up on that offer. And the same thing happens on the other end, but we may have teachers that, you know, already have been pursuing and maybe towards the end of that advanced degree, that this may help them focus in on a particular area of expertise to finish out that masters or rank one or whatever it might be.
Or even just close out the program they're in. One other thing I'm reminded of in terms of the timeframe, the way most of the graduate programs work now, graduate students will go in with a cohort and that, that cohort is managed really by the professors to make sure that they all finish in a particular timeframe. So usually, they're gonna go through a cohort program that lasts no more than two years in terms of starting and completing that degree or certification. So, that's something else that I think might be helpful in easing concerns about somebody dragging a program out over a long period of time.
We've also, that capacity piece, we've got some building administrators, even district administrators that are go-getters. And my biggest fear is, we'll lose some of them over the next, you know, four, five, six years because of all the tremendous things they're doing. If we can start building that capacity with our own district to start moving into those positions when that fateful day occurs, then that's also an advantage to us because we have people that are familiar with our district and our students.
Absolutely.
And they ask?
I'll, I'll make a motion that we, let's see, how, how do we need to actually word it here?
To approve the leadership lab program.
To approve the leadership lab program for the Nelson County schools.
In the year 2016-17 school year.
2016-17 school year.
Good job.
Thank you, Chairperson.
Okay. Okay, Mr. Jackson made the motion, second?
I'll second.
Okay, Ms. Breeding, second, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Carried. Right. I can't wait for that to start.
Thank you.
Okay.
I'm sorry, so as this does start being implemented, and I don't know whether it's, you know, maybe once a quarter or something, if we can possibly have some feedback on how that's going.
Absolutely.
Because it, I'm really interested to see the success that's coming out. It's, and maybe the things that we might realize needs to be tweaked a little bit as time goes on in this first year.
Absolutely. Already kind of tasked Tom, we're gonna be getting some materials out as soon as possible, within the next couple of weeks so that we can start using this as an opportunity to draw attention, to bring applicants to us. So we're excited about moving forward and I appreciate the support.
Okay, the next item is student stakeholder engagement, guest comments. Any person wishing to address the board may do so by following these rules. Individuals representing themselves are limited to three minutes. Individuals representing a group are limited to five minutes. Please step up to the microphone, state your name and address, and if you represent a group, state the name of the group you are representing. Do we have any one that would like to speak? Okay. Okay, with that being said, motion to adjourn. Okay, okay, with that being said, uh, motion to adjourn.
Motion.
Okay, Mr. Kate made the motion to adjourn.
Second.
Second by Mr. Norman, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Can we do that, carry? Okay, next we will convene Nelson County School District Finance Corporation.
Make a motion to convene the Nelson County Schools, uh, District Finance Corporation.
Okay.
Second.
Second, Mr. Norman, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay.
So, will you call the board?
I can do that.
We are now, uh, in Nelson County. If you don't mind, we've still got a little bit of work to do, so, helps out. The, uh, one of the things that we need to do is confirm the officers, and I will just confirm that the officers for the Nelson County School District Finance Corporation are the same as the officers for the board. So, this evening, I elected, uh, a chair and a vice chair for the Finance Corporation that translate to a president, translates to a president and vice president of the Finance Corporation. I serve as the secretary for both organizations, and Wanda Parker serves as the treasurer for both organizations, and so the next item is to have the Finance Corporation approve the refinancing of those bonds as the school board.
Do we need to confirm the officers?
That's what I just did.
Oh, you just did, okay, so we don't have to do a motion on it, okay?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, the next item is refinancing of the two thousand six and seven bonds. We need a approval recommendation, a recommended motion to approve the, uh, resolution to refinance the two bonds, two thousand six and two thousand seven. Do I hear a motion?
Motion.
Okay, Mr. Norman, make the motion, second?
Second.
Ms. Brady, second, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, that motion carried. That was a highlight. The next is adjourn, uh, the Financial Corporation.
Motion to adjourn.
Okay, Mr. Jack made the motion to adjourn.
Second.
Second, Mr. Norman, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? I believe that did that too, thank you very much. Okay, now we, uh, we have no executive session.
That's correct.
Okay.
So we're adjourned.
We are adjourned, thank you very much.
You did a great job.